I'd like to buy down.
What are you laughing at?
The new sound effects.
Oh.
All right, I think we have everybody on. All the commissioners, Pedro, you're here, bring your camera on. There you go, thank you. All right. I'm gonna do it a little bit differently, Melody and you and I talk, but welcome everybody to the Board of Commissioners meeting, the regular meeting, September 22nd, 2020, 6:30 PM. And on this commencement, I'm going to call it to order. And so we are there, but I'd like to have the town clerk read a statement again and then go through the little call up for attendance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics so that those participants who are not very familiar with Zoom will just know where their main controls are. This is a reminder, your main controls are on the lower left-hand side of your computer screen. These are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on when the meeting is in progress because we are streaming live to YouTube. Next, I wanted to go over a couple guidelines as to how you as board members are going to participate in the meeting. The mayor will call on each board member individually to provide comments and votes. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand. Please be mindful of your background when raising your hand as it might get lost in the background, so just make sure to bring your hand forward so that we can see it. Also, if we are in the middle of a presentation and you're raising your hand, but do not, are not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Most importantly, we want to make sure that the board members are able to participate fully in this meeting. So if you have any technical difficulties, please make sure to text me so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlet.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Maury.
Present.
Thank you, all members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Great, thank you, Melody. At this time, we have the sermon opening, so if we could stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance and then we will pause for a brief moment after. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. Hey, we're all back in place. Okay, at this time, I'd like to go over the adoption of the agenda. I understand that there is a request to modify, so I'm gonna flip this over to Town Manager Wells.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, everybody. We have a request from Broad Street Homes, the second rezoning request decision this evening to continue that decision for six days to our November 24th agenda. They are requesting more time to engage with the neighborhood and potentially look at some other, some other options out there. So the board hence would just need to make a, a motion to remove this item from the agenda and move it to the November, the currently scheduled November 24th Board of Commissioners regular meeting agenda.
So one thing, we need to, I'm checking the schedule right now to make sure. I'm thinking that it's actually on November 23rd that we would need to move it to. So that's a Monday.
Thanksgiving week?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'd make.
I'm gonna. Go ahead.
All right, I'm gonna ask for a motion, so don't all jump in.
Okay, I'll make the motion to remove the general rezoning Broad Street Homes, RZ 010285-2020 to the November 23rd Board of Commissioner meeting.
Very good. On that, a roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury. Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good, so that will be moved down to, it is a Monday, Melody, on the 23rd of November, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you, everyone, for that. This time, move down to the public comments. Do we have any public comments under item B?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, very good, none at all. Let's move over to the consent agenda. This time, do we have any requests or changes on the consent agenda or modifications? Seeing that there's none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
So moved, roll call, please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
You guys are moving around on me now here, okay. Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
Very good, so the consent agenda is adopted, and so we move on to the next one. Recognitions, this is introduction of Waxaw's newest employee, and I'm gonna turn it over to Rosemary Number One. How's that? Unmute yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very excited to introduce you to Rosemary Dodd. She goes by Rosie. Rosie has lived in North Carolina since 1997 and has lived in Waxaw since 1999. She comes to us with over 30 years of experience in accounting and finance. She loves family and her pets. I asked her to give me a few words to say about her, and I can't tell you how excited I am and how well the last, her first couple weeks have gone. I think it's been, what, two weeks now she's been with us, and she's just wonderful. And I'm not saying that because she has the same name as I do, but she, she is great, and I think she's gonna make a great addition to our town, and she's already made a wonderful addition to the finance department, is already contributing a lot, so. And there she, there she is, Rosemary, you wanna say a few words?
Welcome, Rosie, you can speak up, take yourself off the mic there.
There you go, so hello, everyone, nice to meet you all virtually. So I'm happy to be a part of Waxaw and the finance team. It's, it's a great experience and I hope to be around for a long time.
Great, welcome.
Welcome to the team.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yay.
We do a lot of that here, so. Thank you, Rosemary, appreciate that, and again, Rosie, welcome to the team. You go by Rosie, correct?
I do, I go by Rosie.
Okay. And where do we find you when we're looking for you in the office?
Um, next to Paula.
Okay, very good, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
Mayor, before we move on, we did a motion earlier to remove the one item from the agenda, but was that also including the adoption of the agenda as a whole?
Uh, we can do that, Charlie, you good with that?
You're muted.
Can hear you, Charlie.
Okay, yes, that would be fine, you really do need to adopt the agenda.
All right, so we're gonna move back and go back on this, I guess, if we can, to formally adopt the agenda. So we made the change to modify the agenda, we, we approved that. And so now we're going to make a request for a motion to adopt the agenda as amended. Have a motion, please.
So moved.
There we go again. We'll do a roll call, how's that, to be effective. Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley?
Aye.
Commissioner Maury?
Aye.
Now we are fully functional, great, thank you, everyone, thanks, Melody, for catching that. All right, and as I look down, I don't have anything under presentations. There's nothing under public hearings tonight, so we're gonna move down to whole business. And this one, I think, this one's the general rezoning of 4220 Waxaw Marvin Road, which is town-owned property. I'm gonna turn this one over to Blair.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we're considering tonight the rezoning of 4220 Waxaw Marvin Road, formerly a county property, but has been annexed into the town, and so it needs a zoning classification. And I would ask that we advance, I can go through any part of the presentation you like, but I was just going to advance to the, to the end there, since you've been through all this two weeks ago. Nick, if you could take us to slide number eight. But again, if any of you have any questions, we can move on back through any of it. But as you can see, staff is recommending the approval of the proposed general rezoning, and this would be rezoning the property from its current Union County R40 zoning to OIS. And the reasoning is that the OIS district is reasonable zoning for its setting within the G3 designation of our 2016 comprehensive plan. So let's see, if we move ahead, just one slide, you'll see a reference to the planning board. Let me do that, sorry. There we go. From August 17th, planning board voted for one, favorable, in favor of it. And you can see their, their consistency statement or, or, yeah. And then, so the motion tonight is for the approval, the rezoning as present, as presented, or denial as presented. And the reasonable, reasonableness and consistency statement, I'll just read that real quickly. The request is consistent with the 2016 comp plan and future planning goals of the town. It is reasonable in the public and in the public interest as it will allow for density consistent with the recommended G3 intended growth sector and will allow for the town's designated use, I thought I'd taken that out. So that is one motion, or the motion of the request is consistent but not reasonable in the public interest as it, and please state your reasoning. So I flew through that, but we can go back and review any part of the presentation. Just let me know. Or if you have any questions.
Any questions from any members?
Mr. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Once you get to the motion on consistency and reasonableness, I would not include that portion that it's for the town's designated use. It will allow for that, that should not be a part of that statement.
Yeah, so my apologies, I thought I'd taken that out, but that was obviously still in there.
Okay, very good, thanks, Charlie, for that catch.
Yes, sir.
All right, any question, I didn't see any questions, any hands raised, any of you? So I will ask for a motion and be specific.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
I make a motion.
We'll go ahead with Commissioner Maury.
Uh, Commissioner McMillan, uh, please go ahead.
Okay, he's giving it up to you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, that's okay, it didn't matter, I'm good. I make a motion that we approve petition RZ 010705-2020 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, go ahead.
Okay.
Okay, I guess we'll not combine this action, so.
Oh, you want me to read the reasonableness at the same time?
We can do that, that way, is that correct, Charlie?
That's correct, Mayor, that can be in one motion.
Yes, if you could continue on, please.
Also, the request is consistent with the 2016 comprehensive plan and future planning goals of the town of Waxaw. It is reasonable and in the public interest as it is, as it will allow for density consistent with the recommended G3, G3 intended growth sector.
Very good, thank you very much, so we have the motion up for the approval and the petition RZ 010705-2020 as presented with the reasonableness and consistency statement. And we'll have a roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tem McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
All right, the motion passes 4-0, thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
All right, we're gonna move down to, there is no new business. Let's see, I'm making sure we didn't leave anything off with the deletion of the one item. Town clerk, do we have any general public comments under this section tonight?
No, sir, we do not.
Very good. All right, we'll move down to the town leadership reports. Town manager, Jeffrey Wells, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, and I just have two quick items to share with you this evening. The first one, and I've spoken to this before, but just want to remind anybody that may be listening, in regards to the 2020 census, we are getting close to the finish line on their process for counting. They are currently wrapping up the, what they call self-response phase. That's where they're continuing to collect online phone and mail-in responses, but they are also wrapping up their non-response follow-up phase in which they try to reach non-responders in person. Their, their deadline right now is scheduled for September 30th, so that's just a few days away. So anybody out there that's listening to this live or might be listening or watching on YouTube between now and the 30th that has not participated, I would just urge everyone to do so. I certainly can't get into, for the sake of time, all the very important reasons why it matters, but it really does matter to get yourself and your family counted. So just want to encourage everybody to, to do that if for some reason you have not. So number two is, as, as we talked about tornadoes and storms and stuff like that at our work session, well, our originally scheduled public input for last Thursday has been moved because we had the remnants of a hurricane that came through here. We were trying to be COVID-friendly with it and have it outdoors, and that obviously would not work under those circumstances. So the Methodist Church was kind enough to help us reschedule that day, so that will be a week from tomorrow, September 30th. And so far, the long-term forecast looks okay for that day, so we will cross our fingers and hope that works. But if for some reason we get rained out, we will try again. We won't stand there under the rain and try to do that, especially since it is an open-air roof. But just for everybody out there, we have two open houses scheduled. Open house number three, that'll be Wednesday, September 30th, and then open house number four is Wednesday, October 7th. They're both gonna be the same, the same public input sessions. It just gives people an opportunity to attend one or the other. We'll have the same group of folks out there, the same stations to walk through and look at our process and give us comments on. It's both days, it's from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM, and it is over at the Charles McGee Shelter, which is the open-air shelter there at Waxaw Methodist Church. We will be supplying disposable masks, hand sanitizer, all of that, that hopefully we can make everybody feel comfortable being able to show up there. And we will certainly do our best on the socially distant protocols as well. We're looking forward to it, our whole planning team will be there. Our engineering team will also be there to show off the master transportation plan and other people that are very kind enough to help us out, including Dina, who's on the screen now. So appreciate everybody's time and efforts to, to go into making this happen. So we'll just cross our fingers and hope that we do not have a weather event between now and next Wednesday to, to get these in. Thank you.
Yeah, just to clarify, so the citizens know it's a drop-in event, so they can come anytime between 4:00 to 7:00, correct?
Yes, that's correct, thank you for clarifying that. Yeah, we're, we're not, we're not giving a presentation or anything like that. It's a drop-in event, very similar to the ones that we did last fall. We'll have stations, we'll have people at each station, and we'll be guiding people through each station where they'll be able to provide their input on various topics that are related to our growth strategy.
Very good. Any questions for the town manager on anything? Okay, we'll move on. I think the Parks and Rec director is up to bat again, so Dina, where's yours?
Hello, all.
Hi there.
I'm gonna be your welcome committee when you come to the growth strategy. So I'm gonna be the smiling face you see first, so I can't wait. I'm gonna go over some updating Parks and Rec activities and what's going on the next couple weeks, so. All right, as always, please visit us on our website and check out Rec Desk. That's how you register for all of our programs and events. And we are finishing up with this program guide, a new program guide is gonna be out next week, so please check that out. What's going on right now is our fitness program with Walking with Miss Amy on Tuesdays and Thursday mornings. So she had a couple with people with her this morning, it's starting to get a little chilly, so bring your sweater, but it's still an awesome time walking in a downtown area. Next week, we have a team program with a partnership with one of our local businesses, Waxaw Escape, so please join us for that. And we're ongoing with our senior fitness program. This Friday is our first drive-in concert. As you know, the weather's gonna be challenging for us the next couple weeks, so we have a chance of rain on Friday, so please check out the website and Facebook on Thursday, just for a weather update. If we have to postpone, it'll be the following Friday, the 2nd. That would be our postponed concert. But we're crossing our fingers that we're gonna be able to have it, because we're really, really excited. We're actually over 50% capacity right now, so there's only, I think, 30 spots left to, so that we're full. So I know people are super excited to do, you know, an outing and a great community event, so please look out for updates on the weather. And as always, we are wonderfully wanting to partner up with our businesses in town and local artisans to provide programming and events that are coming up. So if you are interested, please get in touch with us. Our, our general park rec at waxaw.com comes to all of us on email, so please come and join us. Again, our next program guide comes out on Monday. COVID update, all of our amenities are open at this time. This order goes until next Friday, the 2nd, and then we're looking for the governor's response, hopefully by midweek of next week, of what Phase 3 looks like and what extra things are open or capacity for gatherings might be changed as well. So we're anxiously waiting for that information and just making sure that we are staying safe and paying attention to all those protocols of six feet separation, our mask and washing our hands as often as possible. It's not going. Here we go, and I always end with our vision and mission. Always trying to provide a professional park system, but also that recreational and educational piece as well. So, any questions?
Quick question and or comment on it, so how has it been doing full throttle this week?
So, um, we've been busy. The playgrounds have definitely got a lot of interaction. Um, we, we're doing our disinfective, you know, fogging of all high-touch areas, bathrooms, everybody's, everybody's loving the outdoors, especially with the weather change. So our trail system definitely got a, a bigger hit of participants. We were lucky enough also to partner up with the Carolina Trail Trail, and we were featured in a video they just sent out that hit last Friday afternoon, and we, I got lots of kudos on just showcasing all the wonderful things we have in Waxaw. So it's, um, people love the connectivity that I heard y'all talking about in the work session, which I'm very excited about. And, and they, they, that's like their highest thing, for the park plan to transportation. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm ready, let's, let's get some stuff on the ground.
That's great news. And this is viewable on our website, this video?
It's on our, on the Park and Rec Facebook, Facebook page right now. I will talk to Ms. Jena. I will talk to Ms. Ginny about getting a link on the website for you.
Hey, that'll be great, I'm, I'm sure a lot of people are gonna wanna see that, so congratulations on that.
Yeah, thanks.
Appreciate it. Any other questions for the Parks and Rec director this evening, comments? Quiet evening tonight, so, Dina, thank you very much for the input, and thank you, as always, for being the bright side of a lot of this meeting, so I appreciate that.
You're welcome, thank you.
Very good. All right, this time we'll drop it down to any comments, thoughts, questions from the Board of Commissioners. Any hands that I see forward anywhere? Another quiet evening, I think everybody wants to go home, look at that, so. All right, with that, there's nothing further on the comments on that side, but there's no, nothing on the closed session tonight, so I will ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
Very good, we'll do a roll call vote, Mayor Pro Tim McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Maury.
Aye.
Commissioner Wesley.
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson.
Aye.
We are adjourned, thank you very much, everyone, and we are moving forward every step, thank you.
Good night, everyone.
Be safe.
I have a great one.